All right. Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Brooks Raferd, President and CEO of the North Carolina Technology Association, or NC Tech. I want to thank you for joining us for this briefing on the recently passed state budget signed into law by Governor Cooper just this past Thursday. The program today is an example of our offerings that are typically free but open only to members of our association, but we made this session open to the public and we have a great turnout. A number of you are with employers that are not presently members of the association, so I hope you'll take a moment to visit us online at nctech.org to see more about who we are and what we do. A quick note that we are recording this presentation and we will be sending a link to the video as well as the slide deck to all those who are registered for the session. Because we are in the webinar mode of Zoom, you will see two buttons at the bottom of your screen. The Q and A button is there for you to submit questions that you would like for me to pose to our presenters as time allows. And the chat function is where we would like you to introduce yourself and bring a brief greeting if you like, along with your name and your organization. NC Tech has for many years been represented by the Brooks Pierce Law Firm, serving as our state government counsel. Ed Turlington is a partner with the firm and he has an impressive career in political governmental and legal roles, including serving as chief of staff to a former North Carolina governor. And Drew Moretz, who was fairly new to the Brooks Pierce team, but hardly new to NC Tech, actually was a legislative affairs staffer for NC Tech many years ago, early in his career, then was a congressional staffer and has held senior government affairs positions with the Raleigh Chamber of Commerce and within the UNC system. Our format will be to hear a high level overview of the key elements of the state budget in general, and then a bit more detail about the substantial technology components in the budget. Again, feel free to submit questions in the Q and A section. And Ed and Drew, with that, I'll kick it over to you to lead us off. Thanks for doing this for us.
Brooks, thank you, and greetings to all NC Tech members and friends. This is Ed Turlington with Brooks Pierce, and I'm pleased to be joined by my colleague Drew Moretz. We have eight slides that are going to guide our discussion today, and they will be distributed to you afterwards. Most of the focus is on the state budget bill and the information technology items in there, but we will also provide a higher level overview about this session, potentially some other bills and appropriations. So Emily, if you'd go to the first slide. Thank you. Drew, would you give us a level set about this 2021 session? It being an odd year session, how it fits in the two-year legislative calendar, and also the budget process?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Brooks, for the opportunity. I would say that, you know, what you see here is links to key documents as relates to the budget. What's called a state budget, there are two different documents. The process really is being an odd year, 2021. This is the, what we call a legislative long session, and this is where they will pass the biennial budget for two years. Next year, in the even-numbered year 2022, they will come back in and potentially amend to adjust the document based on revenue picture when they come back in, and we anticipate them coming back in in May of next year to address what is typically the, you know, adjust the two-year budget. Again, this process started with the governor releasing his budget proposal many months ago now, and the legislature took, the House passed their bill in June, and the Senate passed their their version, sorry, the Senate passed their version in June, and the House passed it a couple of months later. And so they've been negotiating with the governor for the last several months, trying to come to a resolution. Again, as Brooks pointed out, they released a conference report a week and a half ago, or just over a week ago, and ran it through the legislative back and forth, if you will, the conference report. Both chambers approved with large majorities after the governor announced he was going to sign the bill, which he did so last Thursday. So this actually is in statute now. It is the law. And the two documents that you see are, you know, the links that you see is the bill text, which is where a lot of provisions that guide what the budget, the funding will go towards. This is the strings attached version, if you will. The second document, the committee report or money report basically shows changes from the continuation budget. Just understand that while the fiscal year started on July 1, unlike in Washington DC when there's no budget, there was no shutdown. That's because we're running off a continuation budget, which is all recurring dollars that those that are going to be true from year over year. And what this document and what the money report shows are changes to that continuation budget. And in the money report, you will see brief descriptions. As we start talking further, you'll see various references to line item appropriations. There's oftentimes a description of what that's supposed to, where, how the funds are supposed to be spent. Those are called snappies. But sometimes that's all that the agencies have to go on as it relates to how they're supposed to spend their money. But those two documents comprise about 1,500 pages and will, you know, are fully implemented of the budget. So Ed, I'll turn it back to you.
Yes, and as you're looking at this page, many of you may know, and some of you may be interested to know, how do I find these documents? Well, of course, they're the links in this PowerPoint, but you can go to the General Assembly's homepage, look in the upper left-hand corner, and it says 2021 budget. Both of these documents have a table of contents. Drew mentioned they're both voluminous. The bill text is 627 pages. However, you'll see in the click-through, there's the table of contents for that, that you can look by topic. The committee report is 761 pages, the money report, but in its first couple of pages, it has a table of contents. And before we move into more specific content, I think it goes without saying that a lot of our public leaders deserve credit for coming to an agreement on this important document. Governor Cooper, our friend Secretary Jim Weaver, Secretary of DIT was very involved, as were many other members of the administration, and of course, our legislative leader, Senator Phil Berger, Speaker Tim Moore, and then some of our longtime IT friends like Representative Jason Sane, Senator Ralph Heis, Representative Jake Johnson. So I wanted to make sure we called out those friends. Emily, could we go to slide two? Now, this slide is intended to hit a few highlights of macro items, some of which are IT and some of which are not. Drew, why don't you click through a few of these and maybe put a little context on that first item about this, the first agreed-upon budget, well, really, the first budget that became law since 2018?
Right. So as Ed said, this is the first enacted budget since 2018. You may recall the last signed budget before last week was actually in the year 2016. In 2017, 2018, the legislature passed budgets. Both were vetoed by the governor, but both were overridden by the legislature. 2019, there was a budget that was passed, vetoed by the governor. The votes override were not there, and so they ended up passing what we call mini-budgets or, you know, divisional budgets, if you will. And then last year, in an election year, in a short session, they ran through pretty quickly several mini-budgets that were dealing with primarily mandatory-type spending increases, such as enrollment growth within the university, enrollment growth within K-12, and some other small items at the divisional level. At a high level, it's almost a $26 billion budget in the first year. It rises to $27 billion in the second year of the biennium. The current appropriated budget, continuation budget, is just under $25 billion. So it is an increase of about $1 billion, just over. Includes raises for state employees and teachers, significant increases in recurring funding for education. The SCIF is the State Capital Infrastructure Fund. This is the first time it's really been truly enacted, if you will. It's what pays the state debt on capital investments and debt, so it pays down debt. It also pays for one-time capital projects. Certainly, I'm sure you've read about the community college/university capital projects, but this is where they're going to be investing in the maintenance of the state. There's a lot of funding for dams and other infrastructure projects as well. But this is going to be an area that carves out from the state budget, from the revenues that are generated, and pays for, you know, large, oftentimes, projects, including some IT projects down the road, likely. One of the main highlights of this year's budget is a $1 billion investment towards expanding broadband across the state. And then there were significant tax cuts, smaller than originally proposed in the Senate budget, for example, but also they started the effective date in some out-years. One of the things I talked about earlier on the, in the bill text version, it, there's a lot of policy baked into this budget, and I do want to point out the, it does revise the Emergency Management Act to require council or state vote to extend statewide emergencies beyond 30 days.
Good. Thank you, and we'll drill down on some of these other items. Just talking about the taxes. Most of you are probably aware, over the decade of the 2010, the legislative leadership implemented a tax policy to reduce corporate and personal income tax rates, and then to reduce the number of tax credits and deductions, and this budget certainly continues down that path. And then you see some of the other items Drew has talked about. Emily, could we go to slide three, please? This is the first of three education slides, and you'll note at the bottom of each of these slides, we tell you where the section starts in the committee report, and then where the section starts in the bill text. You remember two different documents. Let me flag a couple of these, and you can see, we've tried to give you the page and the item reference number. There's additional money for 25 rural community colleges for broadband. There's additional money for cybersecurity out at the community colleges. There is money to continue funding the current ERP at the community colleges, and then additional money to move forward with a new system over the course of time. Drew, anything else you'd flag on this slide?
Yeah, I might want to point out the NR, next to the numbers, means it's non-recurring, which is one-time money. If it says R beside the dollar amounts, that is recurring, which means it forevermore shall be that number until they change it. So when you see an R on the cybersecurity community colleges, that's $750,000. That means that they will get that in all future appropriation bills going forward. It will become part of their continuation budget. And that's, again, what these changes are coming from, is based on the continuation budget.
Thank you. And just a little more nuance there. So oftentimes legislators use non-recurring money for one-time pops or one-time hits, like that type item, to put 15 million out there for additional broadband for rural community colleges. It doesn't mean they won't get other money in the future, but this is a one-time pop. Emily, let's move to slide four, please. Okay, we're now at K-12, and throughout the budget, you'll see various funding for cybersecurity. This is additional non-recurring money appropriated in both fiscal years for statewide K-12 IT cybersecurity. The next item is something called the School Connectivity Initiative. That initiative has been around for many years and is an effort to continue to get, to do what it says, to get high-speed internet to all K-12 schools in the state. This is additional money. There was already significant money for that. The next item is an ERP for the Department of Public Instruction. This is something that started, as I remember, back in 2016. As you can see, there's significant money there, and as I understand it, that money will help integrate their payroll, HR, and financial systems. And then, as you can see at the bottom, we give you another citation about where to go to read for yourself. Drew, anything else you'd say there?
I think you got that.
Okay, let's go to the next item. And Drew, given your eight years of leadership at UNC, if you will, please lead us.
Sure. I'll tell you, the one of the big-dollar item in the budget this year was Project Kitty Hawk, which is a new effort. Been discussed many years, on many different forums, but it's an effort for the University of North Carolina to serve students that UNC is not currently reaching effectively. So if you think about those residents that have some college but no degree, often called those who have stopped out. Military personnel, we have a huge military presence in North Carolina, and the university has, you know, has long had a goal of attracting and retaining more military personnel as they separate and serve while they're serving our country. And then also, there are those who have a high school degree, but for career reasons need to upfit or upskill that the university has not really had that opportunity and the means to provide that contact and be able to serve those students. Details are still emerging on this one, but it's a really unique opportunity. Something that's been talked about for years. But it's about, you know, how do we reach the students across the state and make sure that the state workforce is meeting the needs of the residents, but also the business community as well. Two other items, we have a couple of legislators who are very much into the esport community. And there are two universities. One has a degree program, UNC Greensboro, and the other one has the technology and expertise to build at a fairly quick pace. And so UNCG and NC State University both have received line item appropriations. You can see that most of those are non-recurring, so they're one-time dollars, designed to help build those programs out and, you know, serve the students who are interested in that. UNC Charlotte, Burson Data Center, this is going to create a hub for data science, cybersecurity, and AI. UNC Charlotte has a very good background and our existing capacity in that realm. Also, the Carolina Cyber Network is going to be something that, the details are still emerging on that. But as Ed pointed out, you know, if you look in the committee report or money report on B-40, that's where the UNC section starts, and 124 in the bill text talks about the UNC provisions.
Thank you. Let's go to slide number six of eight. This is a busy slide with a lot of information, and we will hit the highlights. First of all, some of you may know that beginning been the 2018 budget bill, the legislature, with the governor's support, created something called the GREAT Program, that is under the Department of Information Technology. The acronym stands for Growing Rural Economies with Access to Technology. But GREAT has become a real commonly-known name. As you can see down the right-hand column, there's some really large numbers there for various purposes. Most of that is federal dollars that came in through ARPA or other sources, and that's why you'll see non-recurring. I think the legislators and the governor strongly agree, this is really a, perhaps, a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make these significant investments. You'll see some citations to pages about different pieces that go along with this funding, if some of you follow this down to a more micro level. GREAT, as I've always conceptualized it, it is a competitive grant program, where private sector providers, usually with local input, try to find projects to build in unserved and underserved areas. And some of these other newer programs, like the Completing Access to Broadband and Stopgap, are consistent with that. The $100 million for Make Ready Accelerator is an interesting new concept dealing with, as I understand it, some of the infrastructure-like poles that hold broadband. Awareness and digital literacy, that's pretty much what it sounds like. As you know, there are a lot of people who just haven't had access or knowledge to use this equipment. And although the budget appropriates money for two years, we went ahead and put in the four-year number that was in the commentary to the money report. So, for example, on digital literacy, that's four times 12 and a half million. So what this budget does is 12 and a half in FY '22, '23, and then suggests an intent to do that in the future. And then the bottom line, Department of Information Technology has already started this, but they get additional money to do broadband mapping. Some of you are familiar with the discussion on whether or not the FCC maps are accurate enough down to a micro-enough level to know what areas are underserved or unserved. And then one other thing we did not mention, there is baked into the recurring budget an additional 15 million a year for GREAT. So that's in there, plus all of this stuff. Drew, anything you would add?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, let's go to our next to the last slide. Department of Information Technology, many of you know, headed by our friend Secretary Jim Weaver and his very capable team. This slide flags a number of things that might interest you as IT people. First of all, those first five pages give detail on kind of a macro level of their budget. Many of us are pleased that they get additional money, 7.5 million a year for their cybersecurity efforts. The legislature has also charged them to prepare a cyber plan and submit that by next winter. There is a provision in there related to the state donating surplus computers to nonprofits. There's a legislative study on how the agency is funded and the accounting. This is another thing Secretary Weaver is shown leadership on. Many of us have been around this for years, and you know, a lot of the model has been the agencies reimburse the department. And in my view, it's going to be a very constructive discussion about if that's the best model going forward. So you will hear that discussion in the Legislative IT Oversight Committee, which probably will start meeting early next year. And then there's a provision that prohibits state and local governments from making ransomware payments. Drew, is there anything you would add on this slide?
I think I got it.
Okay, well, let's go to our last slide. And by the way, we did our best to be 100% accurate on all these page citations and numbers. If we miss one, forgive us, and if you can't find us, find it, reach out to us. These are some significant projects at other agencies that we spotted in the budget, and I'm not going to read them to you, but kind of going down the list, as you know, DHHS always has large, important projects. The court system, elections, the General Assembly keeps its infrastructure updated. Call center and insurance, mainframe migration at revenue. The HIE, which is, those of you who follow, healthcare has been a multi-year thing. CJ Leeds is a law enforcement project. Employment Security, we know about the importance of that is shown during the height of the COVID crisis. And then finally, the controller over a period of years has been working on an ERP project relates to the state's financial systems. Drew, is there anything you would flag there? Drew, I think you're muted.
Nothing to add.
Okay, and in closing, Brooks, so what happens next? Well, traditionally, what happens is it'll take a period of weeks for the state budget office to authorize the transfer of these appropriated funds to state agencies. Drew, I think you said during your university days, sometimes that could be 30 days or more, but all of us can imagine the, the agencies are really looking forward to that money. Drew mentioned that the typical pattern is in 2022, the even year, the legislature would reconvene to, in other, excuse me, among other things, adjust the second year of the two-year budget. It is uncertain when they come back next week, how long they will take to finish this year's session. Most people think about a week. And then the question is, do they adjourn to May, or do they adjourn to some date certain in January and February that would allow them to kind of stay open for business without either the governor or themselves having to call a special session? Anything you would say about that, Drew?
No, I think you're right. I mean, one of the reasons why they may be called back would be a redistricting lawsuit. They just passed the maps for Congress and their legislative seats. You know, they don't want to be adjourned to May if they need to be back before the primaries. And so there's going to be a potential willingness to stick around, recover themselves back in, even if it's not needed, maybe for a one-day session, but just to be available so that they are able to respond to any type of court ruling. And there's also the federal spending bill, the infrastructure package that's been passed and signed into law by President Biden. And, you know, North Carolina's receiving $9.2 billion in federal money for infrastructure projects. And so at some point, once a guidance is issued from Washington, they may want to appropriate those dollars.
Great. Thank you, Brooks. Those are our thoughts. We would welcome any questions.
Well, thanks to both of you for that. I'll remind everyone, we'll be sending out the slides, which have all the citations that you saw there, to everyone who is registered. Couple of questions from the audience. One has to do with whether or not the state has any sort of either requirement or incentive or encouragement for MBEs, for small businesses and minority-owned businesses, to have an opportunity to do work that the state would be contracting for in these areas you've been describing.
The short answer is, Drew, to my knowledge, we don't have any kind of firm quota, for lack of a better word, but that is generally encouraged in state contracting, and this is one of those things we can provide to you, a provision after the call, that you can circulate to people on this call. Anecdotally, I know I've seen that in RFPs over the years. I didn't see anything in this budget that changes that, which I know was not the question, but that sounds like one. Instead of just winging it, I'll get you something a little more firm.
Great. We'll maybe include that in the follow-up. Another question has to do with whether North Carolina is getting any money from the recently approved infrastructure budget for IT.
Drew, why don't you start there? And let me make a statement, Drew, if you're correct, I'm wrong. I think what we're going over today does not reflect the new funding that was just signed into law. Is that correct, Drew?
That's my understanding. Yeah, we, North Carolina as a whole expects about $9.2 billion coming from the federal government. And my understanding is upward of $100 million for broadband. That is the main IT investment within the infrastructure package. It's mostly transit, roads and bridges. But there is some funding available for broadband expansion, even above and beyond what's been included in this presentation.
And I can pick up on that real quickly, Ed, if that's okay. We had a session, some of you may have participated in, where we had a briefing from the State Secretary of IT and the head of the Governor's Office of Pandemic Recovery, talking about Governor Cooper's initial proposal on how to allocate money from the previously passed American Rescue Plan. And that was 5-point-something billion dollars for North Carolina. About 1.2 of that was being proposed for the trio, broadband expansion to underserved areas, affordability, addressing the cost issue, which is a barrier for a lot of families, even who have access but may not be able to afford it, and then digital literacy, as Ed was referring to. And that figure of 1.2 billion, I guess, has been described as about a billion in the budget that just passed. So pretty clear, very strong bipartisan interest in doing all of that. So that was, that was pretty strongly.
And then, Brooks, to pick, to pick up on something you both said, the pattern with all this federal COVID money has been that Congress enacts it, and then at some point thereafter, the governor and the legislature make recommendations and make decisions over funds they can control. Now, many of us know, a lot of that federal money up to now has gone directly to cities, counties, school districts, et cetera. So this is another thing we're watching, Brooks. Drew kind of touched on this, you know, query, whether if at some point early next year, or maybe even in the May session, the legislature with input from the governor will allocate some of this new infrastructure money.
Got it. Thank you. Another question is whether there is much of, much funding or designated funding toward e-learning. The Department of Public Instruction, obviously, and certainly every local school district had to make quite a a quick leap into that as COVID got underway, but that, that doesn't mean that that need will go away.
Yeah, let me speak to that a couple of ways. The prior COVID bills had a lot of, had many provisions allocating federal money for devices, hotspots, internet connectivity, remote learning, et cetera. There is some money in this budget under the education section that allocates for specific purposes some of the federal funding that has not yet been allocated to specific categories. I want to go back and look at that, Brooks, and give you a more precise answer.
Okay. Okay. Uh, another question from our audience is, I think you earlier referenced uh the ransomware uh provision for uh having to do with local governments and so forth. The question is, is the ransomware prohibition for local governments taking effect immediately? Or will it be phased in because this could be very impactful to disaster recovery for local governments who have not hardened their environments?
Right. Well, if you read the provision, which begins on page five fourteen of the text. And you go down to the end, which is on page five fat, five fifteen, line forty seven, it says, this section is effective when it becomes law. So that would mean it is in place now. That's another thing I want to go back and think about a little to make sure there's not a nuance. But on its face, it looks like it became effective last week when the governor signed the bill.
What I'd go ask you is to um help us understand the nuance here that not everybody may be familiar with. About what exactly the North Carolina Department of IT's role is within state government. It's a, it's an agency of the executive branch, and there are certain uh spending lines and authority lines that flow through. But there are certain areas where that's not the case, and you've touched on everything from community colleges to the universities uh and and other things. Uh, so maybe you could parse that a little bit for us.
Yeah, so if you think about the Department of DIT, which was created a number of years ago. It generally oversees IT at the ten cabinet level agencies. There are some exceptions for certain law enforcement, and as I recall, for the Department of Revenue. Uh, even if it does not oversee spending, it's my understanding other state agencies can use its purchasing vehicles. For procurement. Uh, Community College, UNC, Court System, General Assembly. But kind of as a general concept, I've always conceptualized that if you're not in the ten cabinet level agencies. And you have an exception, or you're kind of your own thing. Then you can, you can use the DIT procurement, but you have a lot of control over your IT. Now, there are certain laws and provisions related to common architecture, et cetera. But generally, the DIT authorities, I understand, it focuses on those cabinet level agencies. A a group of agencies that I forgot to mention that have a lot of autonomy are the Council of State Agencies with independent elected officials. You know, treasurer, um lieutenant governor, attorney general, labor, et cetera. Is that responsive, Brooks?
Yes, and I do think that's helpful for people uh to know. I think maybe uh another question that somewhat related. You kind of touched earlier on the fact, Drew, that this is a two year budget, and although there, and Ed, you touched on the fact, there might be a reference to uh some intent to fund something longer than two years. But they, of course, can't officially do that um under this mechanism. Uh, there are some things that are being done with money that's coming from the federal government, at least in part. For example, uh, the State Department of IT has created, and the governor has created an Office of Digital. Uh, Inclusion or Digital Equity, I guess it's called, and first one in the off, in the country of that nature. There's been a deputy secretary named to oversee that. Um, that's a multi-year, and it's a staffed initiative. Um, and so uh with with the inability to fund things in a way that's uh firm beyond the two year budget. What about areas like that, where there are initiatives that clearly are not going to be stood up and then go away in two years?
Well, let me start here, and then Drew, of course, played a senior role at UNC for eight years and understands budgets to a great detail. Um, that office has been created, a friend of many of us, Nate Denny, is the deputy secretary, heads that, very capable person. And since it, I don't know exactly how it's being funded, my guess is. Without knowing it, that something like that is being funded by recurring funding, it would not just evaporate if there's no federal funding. Uh, and a more likely scenario would be, hopefully, the next secretary will uh continue it. But on that one specifically, Brooks, I haven't looked at that specifically, but this kind of goes back to something Drew said. There's so much of state government, in fact, most of it, that is funded by recurring funding. Agencies, staffing, et cetera, and a lot of what we're focused on today are changes to that recurring funding. Drew, what would you comment?
Yeah, and I would say um a lot of these initiatives that may be funded by federal dollars, um, there's also something we haven't discussed, which is reversions. Um, at the end of the biennium, at the end of each fiscal year, the state calls back the unused money, um, in many cases. Um, to be allocated, reallocated in the next fiscal year. Um, one thing that I would point out is these federal dollars, in many cases, there are provisions attached that say that they do not revert. And they will stay with the intended spend because some of the spending from American Rescue Plan, for example. It doesn't have to be spent in this, in the state's biennium. They can be spent out until two thousand and twenty six. Um, you know, two thousand and twenty four has to be allocated out and appropriated out. So there are different rules for some of these federal funds than like state dollar rules. I mean, there's always, you know, for my, putting my old hat on, there are always problems with state dollars. Because they revert, and then you had to use them or lose them, and there's those types of concerns with state dollars. But um these federal dollars, many times, we'll be able to fund these initiatives beyond the biennium, like the hard stop of June, um, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty three. Um, will not be a factor for some of those federal projects, especially the infrastructure projects, IT spending. Those types of projects can be spent in multi-years um and have a longer runtime, um, lead time for getting the funds out the door.
Thank you. Uh, I want to end with uh this question. Those who have, who are familiar with the budget process in North Carolina know. That uh not just budget matters, wind up in the budget. A lot of times, policy decisions are placed there, uh requirements, you did touch on this, requirements that certain studies be done by a certain date and come back. Um, are there examples besides a one or two that you hit on, you can think of that would maybe in particular affect IT? Policy changes, authority changes, anything of that nature?
Yes, and we touch on this, Brooks, on, I guess, slide. Seven, things such as requiring DIT to prepare a cyber security plan. I I don't remember, Drew, anything that significantly changes, for example, DIT's authority. There is a lot of language that if the money report appropriates X million to an agency for an IT project. There's often corresponding language in the bill text that says, here's how you're gonna do it. Drew, any additional?
No, that that's right, Ed. I think you had it. Um, you know, there there are, sometimes the the provisions, um, you see the money report and you see what's appropriated. And there's that little snappy, as it's called, just a a brief explanation for it. You always want to cross-reference to the bill text to see if there is true guidance about how those funds are going to be spent and the 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 details and rules. Surrounding the the spent expenditure. Um, but sometimes you're you're lucky and it's just a snappy and you have significant leeway on how to spend it.
Right, and then Drew, excuse me, Brooks, one other budget nuance, and I hesitate to say it exactly this way, but I'm going to say it. Having lived through this over a period of twenty five plus years, this may be the most money. The state will ever have to allocate a new, for new purposes. So in that sense, the budget is certainly historic. If you think about a billion for broadband, six billion for infrastructure, in addition to the salary increases. And that's even before we see the infrastructure money. So for those of you who are working with agencies on spending money. This is a good time to go talk to them.
That's very true. Well, uh Drew and Ed, thank you very much for the briefing, the materials. We'll get out to everybody with um a recording of this and the attachments and maybe some of the clarifications, Ed, that you were going to check into. I can include, um, I want to call everyone's attention to the fact that the first large uh signature event, as we call them, for NC Tech in the new year. As it always is, will be in in late January. On January the twenty eighth, we will be in Charlotte for our annual uh Outlook for Tech Conference. It is designed to be easy to get to, even if you're not in the Charlotte area. We often have a lot of people come from the Triangle and elsewhere to attend. But it's a um, a briefing oriented beginning of the year, look ahead. We will release our annual State of the Industry Report, where we compare North Carolina to all the states in a variety of metrics that together. Paint a picture of how strong we are as an innovation friendly state. Uh, you'll definitely want to uh to be there for that. We partner with uh Forrester uh to provide an outlook for tech on the new year. Uh, what does spending look like, what are trends, and how uh technology is delivered and organized within companies and organizations? Accenture will be uh there to present on us, on cybersecurity, that will be their focus. And there'll be some other uh executive panels as part of this. Uh, so a lot of things to be released. We'll preview our year, what's going on with NC Tech. We have a lot of good things on tap uh for two thousand and twenty two. And I know that the dean of the UNC Charlotte College of Computing, uh College of Computing and Informatics. Uh, Dean Fatma Emili is on this call. She is on our board, and I know she appreciates the shout out that you gave her, Ed, the school there and uh and Drew. Uh, great program there, and you're right, they um they're one of the strongest in that arena anywhere. So thanks, everybody, for chiming in today. Be on the lookout for that email. Have a great Thanksgiving.